Okay, welcome to the meeting of the Town Council, March 9th, 2020. Could we please have the roll call by the clerk?
Chairman Adams?
Here.
Counselor Deveraux?
Here.
Counselor Gabrielson?
Here.
Counselor Garvin?
Here.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Here.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Here.
And Counselor Straw?
Here.
And now, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Any Town Council reports or correspondence at this time? Yes, Counselor Jordan.
I just wanted to let people know that the Town Council Ordinance Committee meeting is on March 11th, and it's going to be at 6:00 PM and not 7:00. So, we're going to start at 6:00 PM, and it'll be right here in the council chambers. We're at the point where we're doing our next full review of the short-term rental ordinance, and so I look forward to seeing my usual crowd. It's been a great group of people as we've worked on this, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
I'll just follow on to that. At last week's meeting of the Regional Voice Committee of GP COG, there was about a 45-minute discussion involving some other communities, including Freeport, on the topic of short-term rentals.
Good.
And there's a woman on the staff in Falmouth. I'll get the -- I don't have the electronic copy yet, and the printout was, like, literally microscopic, but when I get the electronic copy, I'll forward it to everybody. That this woman in Falmouth had put together a grid spreadsheet that showed, basically, a quick overview of all of the short-term rental key points of ordinance in most of the communities in southern and coastal, mid-coast Maine.
Wow.
So, for comparative purposes, Freeport doesn't have an ordinance right now; they're just embarking on starting one. So, but we had a lot of good and healthy discussion, and I think GP COG is interested to, you know, lean in a little bit more in terms of maybe crafting sort of a base ordinance that then communities could take and at least build upon and model their own after. So, anyway, it's a topic that generates a lot of interest and attention, not just here at Cape, but elsewhere, and we may benefit from some of that ongoing discussion as well.
Thank you. Anything else? So, I have just one note. We learned that the councilors were all invited last month to a very special birthday. Apparently, Mr. Seth White, who's been a resident of Cape Elizabeth since 1940, turned 107 on February 26th, so we wish him a belated happy birthday. He is apparently the oldest resident of Cape Elizabeth. Okay, with the permission of the council, the next item would be the revaluation update. Assessor Swett has asked that he be able to present that after. That's out of the order that's laid out in the Town Council rules, so unless anyone objects, I think it's a good idea. He does have a PowerPoint presentation. Wonderful, so we'll take that up in a minute. So, we can move right on to the Finance Committee report, please.
So, before you -- in the packet is the usual monthly dashboard, as well as all of the control documents. Nothing of, sort of, out of the ordinary to report this month. All of our key line items that we track and report on in the dashboard for key revenues and expenditures are all either, you know, pretty much in line with expectation or trending very favorably to our benefit. So, unless anybody has any questions on the report and the dashboard, the only other thing I'll mention is that next Monday and Thursday will be our municipal budget review with department heads. We'll be in here in the council chambers. The meetings on both days will be videoed and broadcast, and then archived for playback if you missed the meeting. So, we'll be going through all of the municipal cost centers and the budget recommendations from staff, with chance for question and answer and so on. It's a workshop-type format, so if you're interested in following along with the initial look at the fiscal '21 budget, that's what we'll be doing next week, Monday and Thursday, 7 o'clock, both meetings. Any questions for Finance? Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we now have an opportunity for any citizen to raise an item not on the agenda, so if there's anyone wishing to speak to something not on the agenda this evening, this is your opportunity. Seeing no one, we will move on to the Town Manager's monthly report.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Pardon me. I'll begin this evening's report with announcing that after 40 years-plus of dedicated service to the town of Cape Elizabeth, Bob Malley, our beloved Director of Public Works, shall be retiring. Bob is planning to work through July, and I know that we will all wish Bob well, and there'll be, I would hope and assume, numerous occasions to do that over the upcoming months. When that day comes, and he will leave a tremendous void, there will be a great challenge to fill, and that is the understatement of the year. The election last week was run exceptionally well. I wanted to express our gratitude to Deborah Lane and her election staff for their efforts. We've taken a lot of time to work, and I know Deborah has taken great efforts to learn from last November's election and to try to come up with some creative approaches on this, and you saw some of them deployed last week. With much planning and testing on these new measures, we're striving to be prepared for what is anticipated to be a record turnout in the next November's election, and that was the first of three elections this year. This morning, all department heads were present for a full organizational discussion on the town's preparedness for responding to the crisis, the health crisis of COVID-19, which is challenging government, health, and public safety organizations. Discussions were held on proper measures for sanitizing work surfaces, high traffic, public facilities, hygiene issues such as washing hands, as well as preparing for responding to operations that may be impaired due to quarantine efforts. I want to ensure the people of Cape Elizabeth that Chief Gleason, the EMA Director, Charlie Kennedy, as well as our staff are currently in frequent discussions with the state CDC and Cumberland County EMA on best practices and preparedness. We find that it will be best to be able to respond versus react in these types of situations. Responses to the requests for proposals for the solar power project at the recycling facility are due this Friday, with the Energy Committee planning on reviewing the responses shortly thereafter. We are anticipating a high level of interest due to the mandatory walkthrough that was held a week and a half ago. Finally, if a person is interested in entering the lottery for one of the highly coveted and desired boat racks slots at Great Pond, the lottery entry closes this Friday, March 13th. To quote The Hunger Games, "May the odds be ever in your favor." Respectfully submitted, Madam Chair. Thank you very much. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Have any questions for Matt? No. Okay. We'll move on to a review of the draft minutes from our February 10th meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Absolutely.
Second?
Second.
Counselor Jordan? Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. So, this is where Mr. Swett has requested a deviation, that we take up Item 39-2020 first and then receive his report. Is that acceptable to everyone? Okay. So, Item 39-2020 is the confirmation of the Director of the Thomas Memorial Library. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing no one. Matt, would you like to cue this one up?
I would love to, Madam Chair. Thank you. It's my pleasure this evening to bring forward Rachel Davis as the next Thomas Memorial Library Director. I know Rachel has been with the town for 27 years, and I think that's been the best apprenticeship that one could ever ask for, because she walked in to the job a little over a month ago, and it seemed as though she's been there for the better part of the past 27 years. She's been -- we went through and advertised for the position opening. We had a number of people who expressed interest in it. We interviewed a number of candidates. All along, I will say, I held in the back of my heart that Rachel was going to be interested, and then after we went through the interview process, she expressed her desire, I think after test-driving it as interim for a short period of time. So, after discussing that with her, she accepted the position, and that's why we bring her forward this evening, and are extremely proud to bring her forward, and she's here this evening as well, so all we would need would be any council questions I'd be happy to answer, or if there's anything else I can provide for information.
Let's perhaps take up a motion first. Do I have a motion to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Rachel Q. Davis to serve as the Director of the Thomas Memorial Library effective immediately? Counselor Deveraux? Second?
Second.
Counselor Straw? Any discussion on this item? Well, we're all very appreciative. Thank you for stepping into this role. All in favor? It's unanimous. All right, so, now taking up Mr. Swett's item, which does not require any council action, but is just an overview and status of the upcoming revaluation.
Great.
Naturally, with technology, things are working great here.
Well, while this is spinning up, let me say, this presentation, well, first of all, thanks for giving me some time to speak to you and the public about this revale. This has been kind of cooking in the background for the past year. This PowerPoint presentation that someday I'll be able to present to you is available on the town's website, and certainly you can review it. If any of the public has any questions or comments, my email is very easy to get to. So, if I can do a song and dance for just another minute or two while this spins up, Well, that's a good song. And councilors, if you have any questions along the way, feel free to stop me and ask questions. We can do it that way, and you can also ask me at the end as well. Okay. Sorry for the delay. So, the revale is scheduled to start this spring. Let me give you a brief history about revales here in Cape Elizabeth. We've done one in 2003, and then another market update in 2011, and now we're scheduled to do one this summer. This will be a complete internal and external revale. We'll knock on the doors, need to measure the exterior of the home, come inside, if you'll allow me, verify the bathroom count, seeing if the basement's finished, checking for depreciation, quality of construction. There will be myself and two other field agents completing this task. We're also going to be capturing solar features on the homes. That's because the state of Maine is, for the first time, allowing taxpayers to apply for an exemption on these panels. So, before we can exempt them, I've got to value them, so we're going to capture that during the revale process, and then I'll reach out to those homeowners with the exemption applications for them to fill out. It's a two-year project. We'll start this spring, wrapping up in 2021. You will not see the new values until 2021. So, it's basically a two-year homework assignment, and then we'll finish it up the end of 2021. I'll also update the building cost tables, and that's the cost of, basically, how the building is constructed. We'll equalize neighborhoods based on sales ratios, and we have to do it because it's required by the state. Once our ratios get so low, the state says it's time for you guys to do a revale, so we're there, and we're going to move forward. Talking about the internal and external visits to the home, like I said, we're basically there to verify plumbing fixtures; that's what we base the value on, square footage, and physical depreciation of the home, and also to see if the sketches is accurate. Other towns have recently done revales. You can see that it's kind of a costly endeavor. We're spreading the cost over three years to help lighten the load. This is the solar exemption that I talked about. As of this week, the state has just released the applications to this program, so it's -- I can't really roll it out until I see who has solar panels, so we're working on Next thing I'll be doing is updating the cost tables, and that's the cost of construction. And since the year 2011 to current, cost of construction has increased approximately 25%. And that's the cost of labor, it's materials, it's the soft costs, architecture fees, permitting, all those fees have gone up. And we also use the National Industry Standard, Marshall &amp; Swift, to update our building tables. That's industry standard, so we're not making this stuff up. Talking about sales ratios between the neighborhoods, I'm not going to get into the weeds too far, borrowing my cat's laser pointer. You can see that townwide, we're around 73%, and if you look through the neighborhoods, everybody is around, you know, 70%, 73%, you know, we don't have any real group that is way out of whack, which is good. This way, we can basically raise all the ships kind of equally, so that's a good thing. Yes?
What's shore AC?
That's shore and waterfront.
Got it. Shore acres. Shore acres.
Yep.
And then waterfront.
Yep. And these are just some sample sales from certain neighborhoods. I'm not going to go through all the neighborhoods, but you can see Broad Cove, here's a couple Few sales from Mitchell Road. Shore and Oakhurst area. And we're also going to look at condominiums, obviously. Kind of the same thing, we're right around 73% with all of our condos. Some of the ratios are a little bit skewed, but that's what we're doing the revale for. We'll get those all evened out and cleaned up. And here's just a few samples of some sales of condos. Looking at the sales ratio for single-family homes, you can see that we last did a revale in 2011, and the values were at 100%. And over time, you can see the ratios going down, that means that the value of the homes are going up. Another thing that I want to point out about this graph is the number of sales. You can see it's pretty robust. We have a lot of sales, which is a good thing. It's good to have something to hang your hat on, so. And then, basically, the condos, same thing. Trend line is heading down, and number of sales is quite robust. So, what are we looking at for a timetable? Me and my band of appraisers will be hitting the field this spring. We'll be doing field work until April of next year. I will then take time to come up with a valuation, working on the building tables, the land tables, and doing analysis, and that'll probably finish up the summer of '21. In the summer of '21, that's when you'll be getting your value change notices, what your old value versus new value. Then you'll have a chance to come in and talk to me if you'd like. Certainly, it's mass appraisal, and we do the best we can, but there's always going to be areas where we need to tweak, so you get your value change letter and say, well, you know, "How do you come up with this?" Come on in, and we'll talk about it. We'll see what we can do. And then finally, mission accomplished. We'll get things all put to bed by August of '21, create the tax bills, and send them out. Yes?
For the field work, I mean, is it literally you guys going around and knocking on doors, or is it setting appointments? Is it having people?
Yeah, what we're going to do is, we're going to divide the town up into thirds. We're going to go knock on doors. If we don't get an answer, we're going to leave a door hanger and say, you know, "Call the office and schedule a time to have us come back." I also want to tell the public that if, you know, if you're home alone and somebody knocks on the door, you're not comfortable, you know, with the encounter, just say, you know, "Can I have your card?", and call back in and reschedule it. You know, we're all about customer service. We want people to feel safe in their homes. You know, just because I knock on the door doesn't mean you have to let me in. And yeah, we can certainly work around that. Yes?
Is there a plan to make any announcements in the Courier so that people might be aware that this is on the horizon and not be surprised by you?
Yeah, we're going to do some outreach, get the article in the Courier. I'll head out to some local Lions Club and Rotary Club meetings and push the information out that way, too. And I understand that we've already got some updates on our website about it, so, excuse me. So, yeah, we're going to get it out the best we can. And also, as far as, you know, updates from us, you know, quarterly, I'll be coming in, giving you guys an update, letting you know how things are coming along, how far we've progressed, you know, just to keep you guys abreast.
Can I ask a?
Yes.
Because you kind of alluded to this, is there going to be something distinct that identifies the people who are doing the appraisals? So, if somebody were to say, "I had this person come to my door, they said they were doing an appraisal, blah, 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 blah."
Yep.
Is there something very distinct that people should look for?
Yep. What we're going to do is, I've got magnetic door hangers, and I have some for my truck. I'm going to order a couple more to give to my other field guys. I'm going to take them across to the police station and get them some IDs, so they'll have some official town of Cape Elizabeth IDs.
Okay.
And yeah, I can also get some JPEGs of their faces, and we can put that out as well. But yeah, they've done this before. I know it's Bob and Tim Gingras with Parker Appraisal. Known them for years, they're great guys. They're also certified main assessors. They actually assisted in 2003 with our last door-to-door revale, so they know the town, and we're very confident with this pair, so.
I have another question.
Yes.
I assume that you're also, you also look at properties that are under tree growths, agricultural easements, and things like that, in order to incorporate?
Yep. Yep, we'll look at all those things.
Okay. Good.
So, you probably want to know, how much is this going to cost? Well, like I said, it's spread out over three fiscal years. The majority of the costs are in some software upgrades that we're having done, and some analysis software that I purchased. Another line is for the field appraisers. They're, you know, they charge $40 a parcel, which is kind of the going rate in the industry. Legal fees, consulting, mailings, when all the dust settles, about $180,000. That's a, I consider that a conservative estimate, so I'm hoping to come in under that, but it's always good to, you know, do what you can, so, about $180,000. So, what benefits to you in the town? Well, we're compliant with the state of Maine, which is a good thing. Well, we're compliant with the state of Maine, which is a good thing. Also, it creates equity among neighborhoods and property types, single-family, condos, vacant land, different neighborhoods. It's going to lower the mill rate, which is a good thing. Usually what happens during a revale, we have what's called the axiom of thirds, where a third of the properties go down in value, a third will go up in value, and a third will about stay the same. That's statistically what usually happens. And then my, our assessing database, I kind of take personal, the database, is going to have some upgrades. We're going to have the ability to print property cards, which will be nice. Currently, if you want a property card, or admins go and pull the card out and scan it and email it. Well, now we can just fire off a PDF and send it, which will really be a time saver. Digital sketching of the homes, currently, it's all pencil and ruler, which kind of makes me nervous, and a 100-year-old school building. If all that data's lost, I'm out there measuring every single house again, so we don't want to do that. Get them in digital format, we can back them up, it's better for data security. Also, they're going to give me better reporting. And even with these updates, our assessing software is far cheaper than what's on the market, so we're being thrifty with our spending. I mentioned exemptions. Currently, when the ratio goes down, that affects your exemptions. Last year, homestead exemption was 20,000, veterans was 6,000, and the blind was 4,000. But you only saw 17,000 of that homestead, 5,100 of the veterans, and 3,400 for the blind. That's because we have to adjust these numbers by the ratio. Following the revale, these numbers will be whole again, and actually, this year, they're increasing the homestead exemption from 20,000 to 25,000. So that's a good thing. Now, this year, we'll have to adjust that 25,000 by the ratio, which this year, I'm estimating it to be 82%, down from 85%. So you'll get a little bump, but still, it'll be good to have it at 100%. And that is all I have. Certainly entertain any questions.
Any other questions for?
Oh, one other thing. When we're out in the field, I'm going to make sure that I communicate that to the police department, just so they'll know what neighborhoods we're in, so if they get any calls, you know, hey, creepy guy in a gray, you know, Colorado pickup truck, they'll know that's me. And we'll have the signs on the truck as well, so they'll know what's going on. All right. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda, item 40-2020, is the Fort Williams Group Use Beach to Beacon. This was on our agenda last month. It was referred back to the Fort Williams Park Committee. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Okay, so on January 16th, 2020, the Fort Williams Park Committee voted six to zero on various group uses at the park, to include the Beach to Beacon 10K Road Race, which will be July 28th to August 1st, with a group use fee of $27,500, and expressed an intent to revisit that fee in March for years after 2020. As I mentioned, this was on the town council agenda last month on February 10th. The council referred it back to the committee. The committee has now sent it back, and again unanimously approved recommending the $27,500 group use fee and to revisit this for years after 2020 moving forward. Yes?
Move that we accept the recommendation of the Fort Williams Park Committee for the 2020 group use fee.
Any discussion on this item?
So I see we have Jim here. So what I would like to hear from, if you're willing to be the representative from the Fort Williams Park Commission, is how did you arrive at the $27,500? And in particular, if you can explain how you arrived at that under our group use policy.
So the, my name is Jim Kearney, Shore Road, and I am the chairman of the Fort Williams Park Committee. So to answer your question, two questions, or how did we arrive at the 27.5, and then how did that apply to the group use policy? So two pretty different questions. First thing we looked at when we did this back in 2019 for the 2020 fee, so that's when we established it, and then voted on in January of this year, and then again this past month, was we looked at the $25,000 fee that has literally been, was established at least in 2012, if not well before 2012. It was supposed to be revisited in 2016 for the race in 2017. That did not happen for 2017, 18, and 19 got away from us, so we went back and said, if we applied a 2.5% rate of inflation to that fee, the $25,000 fee, that would have started in 2017, that then gets us to the $27,500 number. So it was our attempt to catch up to where we should have been, and then there was further discussion about what it would be going forward. So at that point, we had actually proposed that we did had a 10% increase for each of the next three years, and looking forward would cover our basis, so that we would have a documented fee schedule with a roadmap for the Beach to Beacon, so the team, so they could set their budget for the long term. We get feedback from the public, and we get feedback from the race officials on both sides, too high, too low. We bantered it back and forth, as we always do, looked at a number of different variables, and decided that we thought that our math was correct, that it was the right fee. But because the Beach to Beacon Committee needed to get their race on the books for this summer, we should just bring just that first number, the 27.5, forward to the town council, get that approved, so that they can go run their race, so to speak. And then we would come back and look at the out years in our next meeting in March. So that's how we got to 27.5. Your next question was, how does that pertain to the group use policy, which was established in 2012? And the policy, basically, we have a fee structure for every event at Fort Williams based on either the, kind of the size of the event, we take into account kind of the nature of the event, and then the other thing that really drives our group use policy is for how long and what area of the park are you renting? The exception to that is for unique events, the only unique event that we've ever had while I've been on the committee, and looking back to some of my associates that have been there for longer, we get a visitor here. We have, the only time we've ever invoked that special event is for Beach to Beacon. And furthermore, the policy actually says that in the event of a unique event that requires special fee structure, that actually then falls to the town manager for establishing the fee structure. And thus, we recommended this fee based on what we know the costs are, what the inflation rate was, and where we, when, where we need to be down the road, and also, you know, courteously providing a roadmap for the Beach to Beacon, so that they can set their budgets and at least get this race underway and financially organized. There is one other unique element, and that is, since the establishment of the race, they've actually come back, and they now start their race preparations on Thursday. There are a number of additional events. So in addition to the $25,000 fee that they've always paid, they actually pay Fort Williams Park an additional $2,400. And so the proposal was, we take the 25, we increase that by 10% to catch up with the rate of inflation, we add the $2,400 for the additional venue that they use, for the cost of the additional services that the park provides, and also for their liquor license, and then that then becomes the new rate. So the $25,000 plus a 10% plus the $2,400 actually comes to $29,000, $2,900, and that is the rate that we had proposed back in January, revisited, and now are proposing in February and in March. Does that answer your question?
So, yes, excellent summary, thank you. That's exactly what I wanted to hear. So it sounds like you took the approach that Jamie had noted was one potential avenue, which was you use 2015 or 2017 as your base year, which, that's one thing we wanted, at least I wanted to get our head around, so that makes sense. And you also touched on the other aspect, which I realize I have a tendency to put process perhaps before it should be, or give it too much weight. But as you noted, under the group use policy for the unique events, the fee isn't set by the park commission, it's not set by the town council, it's negotiated by the town manager. So I hear you that your recommendation is $27,500. That might be, make your rationale, it's all there, but it sounds like, under the policy, though, the town manager's the one that's supposed to go and negotiate what the actual number is. Is that fair?
That is fair.
There we go.
If I may, just to add an additional level of detail to the expense that actually the race does provide, a level of, I guess, compensation that the race does provide to the town. Dave Backer, who's the president of the Beach to Beacon Race, was at the last park committee meeting, and in addition to that, I followed up with David afterwards as far as the overall expense, and it really comes closer to almost 40, almost $50,000 when all the checks are cut, because there's the fee for the fort, there's also an amount that's paid, and most recently, there was $4,814 to the school department for custodial facilities and buses, as well as almost $7,500 for the police use for the day, almost $8,900 for the fire use for the day, and almost $3,300 for the public works crew that assists with labor in addition to the site fee. So when it's all said and done, and all the checks are written, it ends up being just under $50,000 to bring the race forward. And then the final part that I would have is that, this is probably, I know it's the only race in Maine that's certified green, and that's a point of pride that the race has taken as far as being, trying to leave the park a better place than when they arrived. And I know from being on the board for a number of years, that is something that they've strived for and has been really a mark of honor, so just to, hopefully that brings additional level of detail to the council.
So then, last point. So to recap, thank you guys so much for all the work you put into this and the analysis. Greatly appreciate it, especially bouncing it back and forth, so I do greatly appreciate the hard work you guys do. So I guess what I would be willing to vote yes on, because I think all of us agree, like, yes, we should approve this, it's just a matter of what the fee structure would be. So the motion as it stands, I'll vote no on, but I would be willing to vote yes on approve the use and then direct the town manager to negotiate the fee structure per the group use policy.
Yes, Counsel Dever.
Before you sit down, Jim, I really want to thank you and the committee for all of the hard work. I think what happened at the last council meeting was that, I know for myself, I didn't have any of the paperwork, I didn't know how you came up with the fee structure, so that was my concern, how did you come up with it? And going to your meeting and hearing everybody talk about how they came to that number, it really helped me make my decision by knowing that, so thank you for doing that. The other piece is that, at the last, at your last meeting, you had said that you were looking at a five-year increase. Are you still looking at that? Because I thought you said 27.5 up to about 30, up to 35 in five years?
We were looking at a three-year structure.
What was a three-year?
So 10% over each of the next three years, but that, so we were revisiting all of that, that never made it this far. So we get feedback from the race, and we said, okay, let's get this year set.
Okay.
We have more time, and we will get the rest of that. So now the question is, do we get to that, or does Matt get to that? We'll work on that together.
I just want to say, going to their meeting, they've spent pretty much a year talking to different people, meeting with people, discussing this, so they've put a lot of time and energy into this, and I really appreciate all of that work.
Thank you.
I think we're good. Any other questions for Jim?
Can you just read back the motion before we vote, so?
Read back the?
The actual motion before we vote. Did the motion include the number in it, or is it just to approve the, I don't recall the exact wording, or?
It's not on the agenda. I believe it did include the numbers.
I think the wording of my motion was to accept the recommendation of the Fort Williams Park Committee for the group use fee.
And Matt, is that group use fee something that the manager approves of?
I think it seems very reasonable. At this juncture, Madam Chairman.
If there's no further discussion, all in favor of the motion? All opposed?
It's boring. I'll make it unanimous.
It is unanimous.
I'd like to.
And perhaps we could revisit at a later date the wording of that policy.
Fair enough.
Okay, so moving on to item.
Just as a point of information, we're accepting the recommended number. It has nothing to do with execution of the actual policy. So the Fort Williams Park Committee recommended what we should charge them, that's what we have just accepted, is that recommendation. The actual logistics of who negotiates that and everything is still, I think, valid under the policy. Thank you.
Item 41-2020, group use fee request, Making Stride's Walk at Fort Williams Park. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one. On February 13th, 2020, the Fort Williams Park Committee unanimously approved the American Cancer Society Making Stride's Walk, which will occur on Sunday, October 18th, 2020, with a group use fee of $700. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation of the Fort Williams Park Committee to approve the group use for Fort Williams Park for the American Cancer Society Making Stride's Walk on Sunday, October 18th, 2020, with a group use fee of $700 as presented?
So moved.
Second, Counsel Jordan. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor? It is unanimous. Item 42-2020, consideration of memorial bench fee at Fort Williams Park. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? So looking for a motion on this, the Cape Elizabeth Town Council approved the recommendation of the Fort Williams Park Committee to set the memorial bench fee for memorials at Fort Williams Park at $1,500 per bench. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Counsel Gabrielson, is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Jordan, any discussion on this item? Yes?
So I'd love to hear from Jim again. My recollection with the children's garden is even just a small paver, it was much larger than this. So the number, it seems like it's missing a zero from my perspective. I'd be much more comfortable with 15,000. So what discussion happened with respect to this? My recollection is we have a very long list of people that were interested in benches as it stands, such that it seems like we could bring in a lot more money if we set this price a lot higher.
So Jim Kearney. So yeah, and we did talk about where we had come from with our prior fees, what the cost of these benches are, what we could extract if we wanted to, but we felt that at this point, we, there is, and you're right, there is a list of people who over time have expressed interest in memorial benches. We have not gone back and looked at that list. I think the last time, Bob Mall, what?
There are 36.
There are 36 people on the list, but it hasn't been touched in years. So that doesn't mean that there are 36 still current people who are looking for memorials. The price for us to have these benches installed is $1,075, $1,100. We do some maintenance on these. Every now and then, we change out the plaques, we clean them, there's graffiti, we try to reseed or restructure the soil. So based on the numbers we got from Public Works, and based on the cost of benches, et cetera, we figured our cost with some up there. cetera, we figured our cost with some uplift for the town really is fifteen hundred dollars. Did we try to turn this into a more significant revenue-making opportunity? We did not. There are efforts within the park. For instance, you talked about the pavers, that was to raise money for a specific project. This is actually for benches that already exist. So those benches exist as a result of the work that we did within Fort Williams in two thousand nineteen when we restructured the whole central parking and all of the walkways and the drainage down to the lighthouse property. So the benches are there, and we thought that was a fair fee so that anyone that really wanted to participate could participate, whereas if it was, had a zero on it, they would, most people would not and could not participate at that point.
Counsel Garvin.
These are just your regular park benches too, right?
The existing park benches.
Well, not only that, but I saw from the distinction between these type and then there's the more ornamental, like granite kind of things.
Yeah, and we are not programmed to put any more of the marble or granite benches in right now.
So just standard park bench with the little plaque that we're familiar with.
And we do replace those plaques to make sure that they're readable for families.
Any other questions for Jim?
You said that it was about a thousand dollars plus maintenance. Were you looking at five years of maintenance, ten, twenty? How did you reach your maintenance numbers?
We just said, you know, it doesn't cost a whole lot to replace those plaques. Some, I mean, it's literally in the tens of dollars to replace the plaque. So it's probably a ten-year number, but then there's some benches where there's erosion that need extra dirt, you know, land or soil brought in. So it's different for every bench in every location. And we hope to do more eventually, you know, through the cliffside landscape, but this is to get these benches paid for and contribute back to the work that we did in two thousand nineteen.
Any other discussion on this item? Thank you, Jim. So all in favor of the motion? Six and opposed, one opposed. The motion passes. Moving on to item forty-three dash twenty-two. So this item is to consider the ordinance committee recommendation of a short-term rental permit moratorium. And before moving on to the public comment period, I just would like to note that the anticipated or recommended action of the town council is to set this item for a public hearing. So the intent would be that this item would, I don't see the date on my agenda.
April thirteenth.
April thirteenth. So it would be April thirteenth, public hearing, at which time we would expect significant public comment. But for this evening, it would just be consideration of whether to set it for a public hearing. So I saw some hands moving. Is there a motion at the ready?
Is there public comment now?
Are we going to do?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, is there any public comment tonight?
Thank you for the opportunity to comment. My name is Doug Dransfield, I live at forty-eight Richmond Terrace. I speak in favor of the ordinance committee's unanimous recommendation that the town council adopt a moratorium banning the issuance of new short-term rental permits effective June one, twenty-twenty. I don't think there's a need for public comments, to be honest with you. The council should also immediately address the problem that exists with non-permitted short-term rentals. Completion of the ordinance revision need not be completed to begin action on such a matter. Acting to prevent non-permitted short-term rentals would show the community that the council sees this as a significant problem and intends to correct it. A public announcement of the moratorium and the commitment of the council to curb abuses of the current ordinance should follow. Perspective purchasers of Cape Elizabeth property must know that the council is committed to the stated purpose of the short-term rental ordinance as stated in the current draft revision. And I quote, "In order to preserve the character of residential neighborhoods, to minimize the negative impacts of unsupervised tourism activities on adjacent residents, to maintain housing availability for long-term residents, and to protect the public safety of visitors and residents, the operation of short-term rentals must be constrained." Thank you.
Any other comment this evening? Okay. Seeing none. So just to provide a little background before we get a motion on the table, on October sixteenth, twenty-nineteen, the council referred to the ordinance committee a review of short-term rental regulations. The ordinance committee has met seven times to review ordinance amendments. And on February twenty-sixth, voted three to zero to recommend to the council that a moratorium be adopted banning the issuance of new short-term rental permits, which are required under current ordinance requirements after June first. Renewal of short-term rental permits that are current would still be allowed. So for this evening, the town council will be considering whether to adopt that moratorium, which presumably would be to give the ordinance committee a little more time to sort out the appropriate course of action recommended to the council moving forward.
Do you want a motion?
If we have discussion, I'd like a motion first.
Okay. I move that we consider setting a public hearing on adopting the moratorium banning any new short-term rentals after June first, twenty-twenty. The proposed moratorium would be for a hundred and eighty days effective June first, twenty-twenty.
Do I have a second? Counsel Garvin?
I'll second and just clarify by adding one word, short-term rental permits, which is missing from the wording here. So just so that there's no confusion.
Thank you.
The issuance of new short-term rental permits.
All right. Counsel Dever, did you have a comment for discussion?
That was my question, whether there was permits and whether it was adopting, whether we're setting a public hearing.
Yes.
It sounds like this is for a public hearing.
Right.
Yes, Counsel Gabrielson?
Just a couple of clarifying questions. So we're setting this to public hearing, are we also setting the date tonight?
We're setting for the public hearing?
Yeah.
The public hearing at our next council meeting, I believe.
Yes, setting the date for four thirteen may be important to include that in the motion, Madam Chair.
Right. And then, this may be a question for Matt. I'm just curious, we received a report, believe in the fall, of a number of businesses that were operating short-term rentals without current permits or valid current permits. And I'm curious, two things. One, are we anticipating if we set this to, if we enact this moratorium, an uptick in permits issued before June one as a result of people coming into compliance? And then, you know, I guess, building on that, have we already seen any of that additional short-term rental operators seeking permits as a result of the discussion that's happening thus far?
If I may, through the chair.
I believe that we will anticipate, we are anticipating an uptick in applications, I guess, if the moratorium is adopted between now and that date. I know Ben anticipates that as well. We have not seen it as of yet, but they are, but is the, tis the season for those to start flowing in at this present time. So we have a normal flow, but we do anticipate that we hope to, we hope and anticipate to see more legitimate operations come forward at that point in time, consistent with those numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Counsel Dever.
It's also my understanding from attending the ordinance committee meetings is that a lot of the unpermitted short-term rentals are home stays, correct? So they aren't required to get permits, is my understanding correct?
Right.
Okay, so they aren't someone who's not in compliance, they're just not required under the existing ordinance to get permits.
Right. The existing ordinance stays in place.
Okay. So this would be, the intent is of our discussion at the ordinance committee meeting, we started looking at different options and opportunities to try and address some of the current issues. And where we landed was one of the areas that we could really impact in the near term was the banning of the new permits. An order that we could ideally, I would say, help manage the problem or not have the problem getting any, any bigger. And so that was the intent because it's going to be several months before we really land on what will that final ordinance look like.
Yes, Counsel.
To follow on that, I think the idea here is that with the anticipation of changing eligibility of property types to be able to be used for short-term rental, that at a minimum, this would prevent new entries into the market, you know, for somebody that might jump in and then literally just several months later find that that property is then ineligible for the type of operation that they intended for it. So it has a small effect of curtailing growth of the activity. It has the secondary and, and I think beneficial impact of hopefully bringing some people off of the sidelines that are operating outside of the current regulations. But as you point out, you know, many of those multiples of listings are in compliance with the current regulation. That regulation is likely to change in some way. But just because there's a hundred and fifty-plus listings doesn't mean all of those are required to be permitted under our current regs. But for those that should be permitted and aren't, hopefully this will draw those people into compliance, at least in the near term, so.
Kenny, did you want to amend your motion to include the work permit and the date of the public hearing, which would be April thirteenth?
I will amend my motion. It should read, short-term rental permits, new short-term rental permits, and that the public hearing would be held on April thirteenth here in the council chambers during our council meeting.
Do I have a second for that amendment? Counsel Garvin, can just go ahead and vote on the amendment at this point? All in favor of the amendment? It's unanimous. Okay, is there any further discussion on the motion on the table? No, all right. All in favor? It is unanimous. So that public hearing will be April thirteenth here in the council chambers. Item forty-four dash twenty-two. Receipt of audit results fiscal year twenty-nineteen. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one. The council and school board met in workshop session on January twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty to review the results of the fiscal year twenty-nineteen audit results prepared by Runyon Kirsten Willett. The boards also had the opportunity to ask questions. There are links available in this evening's agenda and the documents available on the website if anyone wishes to review those. Do we have a motion to acknowledge receipt of the results of the fiscal year twenty-nineteen audit ending June thirtieth, twenty-nineteen, as prepared by Runyon Kirsten Willett as presented?
So moved.
Counsel Garvin and Counsel Dever, a second, thank you. Any discussion on this item? Yes, Counsel Garvin?
I just want to again commend the staff and the auditor for their work, and it's great to see the improvements made year over year. So congratulations and nicely done. Thank you.
Anything to add, Matt?
Just extremely happy to get to the point where we are at this right now and to see on the track that we are heading is satisfying and very happy to have the staff. They do, they work really hard to get this together and continuously working to improve.
Great. Thanks. All in favor of the motion? It is unanimous. All right, moving on to item forty-five dash twenty-two. Vote authorizing expenditures for school renovations. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none. So this item is, relates to the, the Department of Education had notified Superintendent Wolfram that the town had been awarded funding through the School Revolving Renovation Fund to finance expenditures of up to three hundred ninety thousand four hundred, I'm sorry, three hundred ninety, four hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars for renovations to Pond Cove Elementary, Middle School, and High School. Bond Council Jim Safian or Saffian?
Saffian.
Saffian has present, prepared a vote for town council consideration to obtain a loan through the Maine Municipal Bond Bank School Revolving Renovation Fund under the Maine School Facilities Finance Program in an amount not to exceed that amount of expenditures noted for, of which the town anticipates that thirty percent will be forgiven and the town will be obligated to repay seventy percent of the balance of the loan. Do I have a motion as laid out in the agenda? Not going to read through all that. Counsel Gabrielson, is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Jordan, any discussion on this item?
Is there anybody here to explain what these are? Oh, Jamie's here.
So, may I? Valerie and I are both on the building committee, and so this is something that came out of the work, an opportunity that came along in the process of doing the needs assessment work and subsequent recommendations from the engineering and architectural firms. So the School Revolving Renovation Fund is something from the state that they make application available to, if you have projects that, they have priority one, priority two, priority three type designation for different projects. Most of that prioritization is based on sort of critical safety needs, critical infrastructure needs, things of that sort. Each project can be up to, individually up to a million dollars, I think I remember.
Per facility.
Yep, per facility. So we were in the fortunate position as a community of having just had the engineering and architects go through the schools and make a fairly detailed punch list of a bunch of things that needed to be done. So even notwithstanding the conversations that are ongoing about what renovations need to be done to the schools for the long term, what potential replacements when, and all that kind of thing, these are immediate and critical things that need to be fixed, even if you were to replace the buildings two years from now, five years from now, ten years from now. The benefit to the community is that the loan is A, interest-free, and B, paid back at a seventy cents on the dollar rate. So we're basically getting thirty percent free money from the state that we pay back over time, that we can put to use immediately. These have to be ready-to-go projects. So the advantage, the sort of first mover advantage that we had over a number of other communities that may have been applying for these same dollars is that we had very detailed specifications about what we needed to do, when we could do it, and that it was ready to go because of the work that was done from the needs assessment. Whereas other communities might say, oh, that would be nice to have that money, but gee, what would I, what project could I pull together and legitimize, you know, the need for? So it was really just a fortuitous, you know, convergence of circumstances that we'd been doing all this work to look at the schools and that we were made aware of this opportunity. Credit goes to Marcy Weeks over in the school business office. She's been very dogged about identifying these types of things and really, you know, turning over the couch cushions and shaking out the change that's there in dollar amounts large and small. This is, this is a bigger one. So there really is no downside to this. It's work that needs to be done. It's not necessarily CIP work, but it's work that's needed and necessary in the buildings. And we get the advantage of And we get the advantage of, you know, of much reduced rate to get that work done, so.
Okay. Thank you.
And also, some of the, some of the items that were flagged for renovation through this fund, Marcy had noted, are things that could potentially be carried over to a new building if we end up moving forward with that. So she's really thought through it carefully. Did you have a question?
Just to note that the lion's share of the amount is for the high school, which the building committee might understand is looking at Pond Cove and the Middle School. And if you crunch the numbers with the discount that we get, even the small amounts spent on Pond Cove and Middle School, even if you said, oh, whoa, if we're tearing the building out, why are we doing this? With the discount from the loan forgiveness, we still come out ahead, so.
Yes, Council Deveraux?
My, my only question is, there's no maturity, interest rate, terms, we don't have anything like that. And it says that Chairman of the Town Council and the Treasurer would determine that. I just have a question, has anyone dealt with this before? Are there typical interest rates or maturity? It says five and a half years. I'm just curious how that's going to be determined.
So this is actually interest-free?
Oh, it is interest-free.
Yes.
That's a good deal.
Did you have something else to add?
It is currently in the, in the proposed budget for the school, for the, one of the first-year debt services in their, is in their projected budget at the present time, if the council authorizes it to go forward at this point in time. So I confirm that as well with the superintendent. So they, they are prepared and ready to move forward. But it is an interest-free, and they do have up to five and a half years. That doesn't mean you couldn't pay it off sooner, but the term is up to that amount.
That's great. Any other questions on this item? Okay. So I think, I believe the motion is to authorize expenditures of up to $390,429 for school renovations, as laid out in the agenda. All in favor? It is unanimous. Item 46-2020, acceptance of police department grant. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one. The Finance Director is recommending the council accept a grant in the amount of $6,356 from the Maine Bureau of Highway Safety for the Click It or Ticket program. The grant has a match requirement of $1,589 that the police department will meet through educational programs at the high school, middle school, and family fun day. Do I have a motion to accept and appropriate a $6,356 grant from the Maine Bureau of Highway Safety for the Click It or Ticket program through the Cape Elizabeth Police Department for the period of March 1st, 2020 to August 31st, 2020? Council Deveraux, do I have a second? Council Garvin, any discussion?
Do I have to wear my seatbelt?
All right, all in favor? It is unanimous. Item number 47-2020, write-offs of uncollectible sewer liens receivable. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one. Did you have some information on this?
Sure, I'd be happy to talk about it, Madam Chair. John Q. would be here this evening, but I'm afraid he has come down with the seasonal flu, so he would be, otherwise he would have been here to help us out on this. However, one of the roles as municipal officials is your ability to discharge uncollectible bills as they come. Since this is a sewer lien on both of these properties, that, that's why this motion has been brought forward for yours, discharging them. We have two liens that are out there, and they sit back there for quite some time. One is from 1989 to 1984, in the amount of $1,290.23 for a property that the town had foreclosed on due to unpaid taxes and took possessions of it. At that point in time, it should have probably been discharged as the town can't collect from itself. The second one is a property that was foreclosed on as well by the mortgage holder back in 2013, and that was in the amount of $359.62. Subsequently to the foreclosure, the mortgage holder then resold the property at auction, and the lien was never discharged. Ultimately, this has been sitting on the books since 2013. These are old debts that have been not gathering interest but gathering dust. And so in order to clean the ledger, that's why John has brought these forward, to be discharged by the council this evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Do I have a motion to authorize the town treasurer to write off $1,290.23 in sewer liens, as laid out in the agenda? Council Gabrielson, do I have a second?
Second.
Council Jordan, any discussion on this item? All in favor? Five in favor, all opposed? One opposed, the motion passes. Item number 48-2020 is the fiscal year 2021 municipal budget. Anyone from the council, anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one. Matt, would you like to intro this one?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'd be, I'd be happy to. This week, it would have been this evening, the head ran to a couple of snags this afternoon. But this week, I will be delivering the hard packet to the council for this year's municipal budget. This evening, I'll bring forward a few different highlights that we're looking to bring forward with this year's budget, and that will be, the council will be reviewing over the next, next couple of months. The current budget as brought forward contains some significant capital item purchases that we're looking to bring forward. The capital plan for this year includes significant investment in our public safety, infrastructure with investment in new police radios, breathing apparatus for the fire department, and the installation of new communications tower at the recycling center site. Additionally, the capital plan has a planned investment in the installation of new LED lighting to replace the current energy inefficient lights that we currently have, looking to have a long-term benefit to the town from the cost savings. There is planned replacement of the Public Works Tool Carrier at an estimated $180,000, and Phase 3 of Scott Dyer Road is, reconstruction is planned to begin this summer, as well as, we had an estimated final cost component of $110,000 for a match for the final paving. The capital plan also has replacement of the turf field for this coming year at Hannaford Field. This is offset in part by the, by the replacement fund that was set up at its inception of $279,000, with the remaining $325,000 in this year's budget. There's also an, the above items that I just noted will all be looking to go through those via lease purchase agreement that we have done in the past. The benefit from that, or the desire from that, is to minimize the cost of the tax impact, but while providing some stable, stable expenditures over the next five years. There's also an anticipated expenditure of $400,000 for long-needed drainage work to be done at, on Kettle Cove Road. That's been put off for a number of years, but it's of critical nature now. And now, offsetting the capital increases is the capital expenses, the use of unassigned fund balance in the amount of $1.3 million towards capital improvements, and continues the use of $300,000 against annual operating expenses. This will lower the current amount of unassigned funds, but keep the overall level of unassigned funds healthy and properly in line with current policy. Additional funding will be carried forward from the current fiscal year to offset the capital expense at roughly $580,000. Finally, the Fort Williams Park Fund will participate in funding capital expense in the amount of $200,000 towards additional improvements to paving and drainage at Fort Williams Park. Revenues from sources other than property taxes are also forecast to have a net increase. Residents have been buying new motor vehicles, and thus monthly collections have been improving. The budget projects $2.3 million in excise taxes, which is $100,000 more than the budget for the current year. Community service revenues were also adjusted to further reflect the current tracking of revenues. You will note solid gains in community services revenues, specifically in Cape Care, as well as Richard's Pool fees. Revenue for pay-and-display parking fees at Fort Williams Park is estimated in the amount of $375,000 in year two of that program. Finally, in Governor Mills' state budget, there's a forecast increase in revenue sharing. Last year was set at 3%, this year it's set at 3.5%, which, which is going to reflect a significant increase to the town, well overdue, getting back towards where we should have been for the past 15 or so years, quite frankly. I look forward to discussing this, as well as many other items, as we go forward through the budget process. I want to thank all of our department heads for coming forward, all of their requests and getting their information to us, and look forward to working with the council going forward.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to refer the proposed municipal budget for fiscal year 2021 to the Finance Committee for Review? And that, that actual budget will be forthcoming, hopefully, by the end of the day on Wednesday.
So moved.
Council Garvin, do I have a second?
Second.
Council Jordan, any discussion on this item? All in favor? It is unanimous. Item 49-2020, Town Council Goals. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? The Town Council has met twice to review goals for 2020. We will be reviewing the latest draft this evening that is posted online for, for the public to review. I will entertain a motion to adopt, edit, refer to workshop for further review for those Town Council goals. Is there a motion? Council Jordan?
I move that we accept the Town Council goals as written.
As written? Was that what you said?
Written?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Council Caitlin Jordan, any discussion on this item?
No.
All in favor? It is unanimous. Okay. Item number 50-2020, Cooperative Agreement with the City of South Portland Relating to Snow Removal Vehicle Turnaround Routes on Local Streets. The, the Town of Cape Elizabeth and the City of South Portland have been working, oh, I'm sorry, any, any comment on this item? No. The Town of Cape Elizabeth and City of South Portland have been working together on a cooperative agreement relating to access on town and city streets for the purposes of snow removal and vehicle turnaround routes. Then the streets sharing a common boundary included in the agreement are Edgewood Road, Red Oak Drive, Stone Drive, and Cliff Avenue. The town's attorney has reviewed and approved the agreement, and there was a memo with that, all of that information, I believe, in the materials for this evening. So do I have a motion to authorize the town manager to sign the cooperative agreement between the City of South Portland and Town of Cape Elizabeth related to snow removal vehicle turnaround routes?
So moved.
Council Jordan, do I have a second?
Second.
Caitlin Jordan, any discussion on this item? All in favor? It is unanimous. All right. Item 51-2020, this would be, just to queue up the item, in response to the state legislative action regarding just single-use disposable bags and certain disposable food service containers, we'll be looking to refer our town ordinance to the Recycling Committee. Any, just, any public comment on this item? No. So we're looking for a motion to refer to the Recycling Committee a recommendation on review, revision, or repeal based on recently enacted state laws relating to single-use disposable bags and certain disposable food service containers. Do I have a motion? Council Deveraux, is there a second? Council Garvin, any discussion on this item? All in favor? It is unanimous.
Madam Chair, for me, I have put the, the heads up to the Chair of the Recycling Committee, the former Chair, and the staff person liaison to the committee, so they, I sent it all to them last week saying, this is coming your way, I believe. I'll formally let them know tomorrow.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the last item on the agenda, the annual evaluation of the town manager. The town met in executive session previously to begin the evaluation, and will proceed this evening. Any public comment on this item? So looking for a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to 1 MRS Section 4056A to continue the annual evaluation of the town manager. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Council Jordan, and seconded by Council Deveraux. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous.